Well, welcome. Town meeting's coming up. This is one of the two meetings where your elected representatives are going to decide every penny spent in Milford for the next year. A lot of times, people don't understand it's not the school committee, it's not the selectmen, and it's definitely not the finance committee that decides. We, as a group, the other groups, suggest to town meeting. And then you'll see the last articles where we're taking back leftover money, sometimes as small as $6. Every penny is decided by the town meeting. So, tonight, we're going to go through all the articles, give you the information, plus and minus. By the way, it is up. The entire warrant and the comments are up on the town website. So that's available to any of our residents. So let's start with introductions.
Hi, Al. Chris Moore, chairman of the finance committee.
Mike Storres, member of the finance committee.
I guess Article 1 is always the easy one.
Yeah.
We get up, we give reports, typically yours will be the first report.
Yeah, usually, we try to give like almost a financial state of the union, is what I almost equated to, in which we inform the town meeting members, you know, what the budget that we're presenting this year entails, as well as various other money articles within the town meeting, and present them, you know, those articles as well, and the financial impacts that they have on the town.
Well, it's always good because you give them a 30,000-foot view, and they can look down and now say, okay, what are the big changes or the big items coming our way?
Yeah.
First article that matters, Article 2, personnel.
So this article basically sets the wage and compensation schedule for salary positions. So you see all the step levels and step categories, and basically it just determines the wage salary. Obviously, cost of living goes up, and we have to adjust these every year. This is set by the personnel board, and then town meeting will either debate on it or just approve it as recommended.
And this year, it's the 2.5%.
2.5%, yeah.
When we go to Article 3, elected official stipends.
Yeah, same thing, it's 2.5% cost of living adjustment on that. And these would be elected officials, such as sewer board, board of assessors, moderator, that type of stuff, selectmen.
Everybody but FinCom and school committee.
No, that's not true. We get a 5% raise on $0.
Yeah, I mean, every year, they double our salary from 0, times 2, to 0. The big one, this is always the amazing one for me, the budget, Article 4.
Yeah, Article 4 is our entire budget, line by line. So it will be submitted as an entire article, and then you'll have the ability to pull any line item you want out for separate debate, or you can accept the entire budget as presented. And usually, typically, has been the case in the last few years, that we have just accepted, you know, we do all the work in the background, and we fight really hard about every penny, and, you know, and town meeting has been generous enough to accept the way we presented the budget.
But realistically, if I had an issue like years ago, a resident had an issue with the head librarian's salary. So out of all the items, he requested one salary be pulled, and that's legitimate. You can do that. You can request that an entire department be pulled and debated, which is rare. I mean, the tough part, I think, people have to come to grips with is, by the end of the night, we have to have a balanced budget. So if you're going to recommend that you add a dollar, or a million, or whatever you want.
Absolutely, and that certainly affects everything that we do there, and then the counterbalance is what we do in October, whether it's an allocation that we would have to adjust, that we would do to stabilization, or that type of stuff. But as Mike says, Article 4, I mean, we're at $107 million now. It's, you know, we're up about 4% from last year budget-wise, and that's kind of the trend that we've had over the past two or three years, of about a 3.5% to 4% increase on the budget. So $107 million, obviously, is a considerable amount of money. I think all our department heads do a great job of budgeting and getting best bang for the buck. I think around all the area towns financially, we, obviously, I believe in the best safe. I know I'm very biased on that. But also, not only in a financial good shape, but I think in a services good shape. I think we provide a fantastic amount of services, whether it's a well-trained police force, fire department, trash pickup, leaf pickup. You know, I really think that we give the taxpayers a good return for their taxes.
And that's something that people, a lot of other towns compare themselves to us and say, you know, the average house in Milford is like $4,900, and their average is $4,900. But then, well, wait a second. You have to pay for trash. Or the one where you have to pay $400 per student to be on a bus? To me, that's all tax.
Of course it is, yeah.
If they're putting their hand in my pocket, I don't care if you call it a fee, you know, if you've got a five-year-old or six-year-old starting school, can't walk.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm really happy, you know, when, like you say, when you look at the value that we provide. I mean, $5,000 compared to everybody around us is great value. I still think it's too much, just in general, any tax level is too much, but we can feel good about it, especially when you look at all the services we provide. Now, years ago, we used to go through a series of what we called housekeeping. Our town barrister got mad at us. But reoccurring articles.
Right, so years passed, we had seven different articles, you know, the town warrant was seven articles longer. Now we've combined them into one article. Again, not housekeeping, but reoccurring articles, things like allowing the treasurer...
Jerry's gone, we can call him.
We can call him, I'm just kidding. You know, things like allowing the treasurer to accept deeds in lieu of foreclosure, things that allow, for instance, if a town vehicle was in a car accident, and there was insurance money that the town received, we can automatically use that money to purchase a new replacement vehicle without going back to town meeting. So things that, again, you know, we've always traditionally passed over year, over year, but every year, we need to reauthorize those things.
And what you brought up, like, I think, two years ago, somebody took out a traffic light. We don't want to wait till the next town meeting to vote on putting up a traffic light, because their insurance is going to pay for the traffic light. We need the traffic light. So, I mean, those, I don't see any changes over the last few years.
No, and I think, you know, this was a result of the town meeting improvement committee that was founded, I believe, three to...
Three years ago.
Three years ago, thanks. In which they tried to make town meeting a better environment, whether it's a better presentation, whether it's consolidations of articles, and this is one of the results. And to be honest with you, it saves us probably 20 minutes to a half hour.
Probably, our most popular change of town meeting is combining those.
Number 6, Article 6, our favorite, they call it the vending machine.
And Mr. Korea calls it potato chip money, and he missed that, he missed that meeting, and I still call it potato chip money, just for him.
Of course.
As you mentioned, every dollar has to be accounted for by town meeting. So the schools have vending machines in various schools and that type of stuff, in which that money needs to go from the vending machines to the students' activities fund. And that can't happen without a vote. So that's what this vote is now, in order for the vending machine money to be applied into the student activities funds.
There's really no cost to Milford.
No.
This is, you know, now it's getting more healthy. It's no longer just potato chips. But it's snacks, it's soda, that the kids spend, and they get it back in different events for the kids.
Yep.
Okay, cable franchise fees.
Yeah, so with every cable bill, there's a, there's a small peg access fee, or sometimes it's called a franchise fee. And these are funds that help support studios like these, and it also helps fund the studio back at the high school. So basically, you know, again, every dollar needs to be accounted for. This is money that the town receives, but obviously, knowing that this money is supposed to be going to utilize for peg access, we give it back to the school.
Now, this, Article 8 was an interesting one, because we were able in the past to work out payment plans of up to five years. And legitimately, people came back and said, well, when you put up to, you know, three to five years, how do you determine who gets three and who gets five? Is it, oh, it's Mike's cousin, so we like him, we'll let him go five?
Yeah, so this article basically just standardizes it at three years. I think after the three years, I think they can go to the treasurer and appeal if, for some reason, they need to. But basically, right off the bat, it's a set three-year schedule for the payments.
For the payments. It eliminates any questions. Staff car for the fire chief.
Right, so, you know, obviously, as vehicles age, there's a replacement plan for older and aging vehicles, and we do, the fire chief's car then goes to the deputy chief, and we purchase new vehicles. This is typically something that's purchased in the fall. However, due to a very costly repair, we decided to push that up into the spring to, you know, so we're not paying for that repair, and then paying for an additional vehicle as well.
And to the chief's credit, both he and the next article, the parks department, came to us and said, if we have to, we'll find a way around getting a car in the spring.
Sure.
Our biggest thing is, we don't want to spend $9,000 repairing an old clunker that in six months, you're going to throw away.
Right.
But, you know, my hat's off. It wasn't, you have to buy me this car. It's like, if you can't afford it, and I think that speaks highly of our department heads, because we could have told them, no, we don't have enough money, we can't afford it, and he would have lived with it. But, you know, our responsibility is to be fair to them, too.
Yeah.
When we can afford it, you know, same thing, when we go to the next article, Article 10, the pick-me-up truck.
Yeah, I mean, this was a truck that basically failed inspection. It was, it was due to be replaced next year, so it's not like this came out of the blue. We just were one year short on expectations, life expectancy of the truck. So it failed inspection, so at this point, it's not roadworthy. It can only stay on location, whether it's just driving around town park or whatever, which obviously is not a feasible situation. So because of the fact that it was planned for next year, and the fact that we can use this for plowing in the winter, this was another advantage of where we can do a capital project in the spring where we normally don't do it. So we can help out the parks department, get them going with the truck, as well as now, we will also have another truck with a plow to be ready for the winter season next year.
So it's one less person we have to hire as an outside contractor.
Yeah.
And I think people forget that by the time you buy it on state list, you get it, it's three months.
Absolutely.
So it's three, four months. By the time we would approve it the end of October, when it was budgeted, it would be November, December, Jan, February.
Yeah, yeah.
So all of a sudden, you know, the good Dr. Azim comes online at the end of March, and with our luck, there'd be no snow for those four weeks.
Right.
So that one, just, again, just like the staff car for the fire department, was just moving it forward. Increasing the board to five.
Do you want to do Article 11?
Yeah, I'll do that.
You want to do 11? Do we know anybody?
Yeah, Number 11 is an article I sponsored for town meeting. This is step one to increase the board of selectmen from a three-member board to a five-member board. If town meeting approves this, this would go to a townwide question in 2020.
Referendum.
Yes, in 2020. So the entire town will have the opportunity to vote on this if town meeting approves it. So my personal view, I think there's a lot of justification for increasing the board's selectmen from three to five. We don't have that much time here today, so...
Well, we put a lot of the notes that you presented in this report. So anybody who wants, you know, a quick view of some of the advantages, you know, diversity, less, you know, recusing, because I never thought of it until you brought it up, that you got three selectmen, if one of them has to recuse themselves because it affects them directly, well, you got a chance with only two votes of coming up tied.
Right.
You know, and the idea of making the board a little, you know, wider in diversity is not a bad idea either.
Right. So if this passes, it'll go to a townwide vote, and then if that passes, we'll have new selectmen elected in 2021.
2020 or 2021?
2020 would be the referendum, and then 2021 would be electing new members if this passes.
Fiscal's 2021.
Calendar.
Calendar, 2021.
Okay, I, well, that depends, too, if we move the election.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, if you move the election to November...
Yeah.
Get it ahead of me, Al.
Article 12 is taking care of widows and widowers on health insurance.
Yeah, this was, this was an article sponsored by the selectmen in the insurance advisory committee, in which it would allow widowers, widow or widowers, excuse me, of town employees to remain on the town's health insurance after their spouse has passed, and...
With the town paying its part.
Yes, so, you know, you think about the trauma of losing a spouse, and then to have to think about that now, all of a sudden, you have to worry about insurance as well. That's something that someone who's, you know, dedicated themselves to the town to spare their family, something like that, it's just the right thing to do. And it's also a very small number, excuse me, of retired person who would...
Well, the thing that hit me the hardest was, okay, so if my widow, okay, or my wife was a town employee, and I'm covered by her insurance, she passes away, up until today, I could stay on the town insurance, but all of a sudden, I got to pay the whole shooting match.
Yeah, right.
So all of a sudden, I could be getting an extra $1,000 a month bill? And you start thinking about some of the people who are living on social security. They're only making $1,500 a month.
Yeah.
Taking away $1,000 from them is not trivial, you know, and when, I think Zach said, we could have up to three people qualify.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was a small number.
You know, you sit there and say, anybody's grandmother or grandfather, we can have some compassion and pay our 50%. Okay, oh, my favorite, more money for the water company negotiations.
Yeah, so, give you a little background information, the, we appropriated money to negotiate with the water company in good faith. We got a number. The negotiations fell apart in the details of the deal, and so we're going a different route, where we're going to DEP. We're asking them to set a price. That costs money. Obviously, there's going to be hearings, there's going to be witnesses, there's going to be evidence submitted, you know. We are submitting that the water company is worth $40 million, and they're submitting that the company's worth upwards of $160 million, I think that their number was. So there's, there's a big gap in between. And so, you know, we're, we're going to be asking for town meeting approval for about $1.5 million to help with the legal costs of, you know, doing those legal witnesses, again, in evidence.
Well, right now, we're in $1 million already, if I remember right.
Yeah.
This will bring us to 1.2, or we're already in...
We're already at 1.2.
We're 1.2, this will bring us to 1.4. But the key is, all the evidentiary work is going to affect the valuation.
Right.
So you can bet that the water company is going to bring all their experts and everything...
And that's, and that is exactly what happened, is that the water company has brought in, I mean, they're throwing everything but the kitchen sink at it, and our lawyers are, have to have rebuttals to all, so every specialized consultant, or engineer, or whoever they bring in, there has to be rebuttal to them, and we have to answer that. And this costs money, obviously. And because they're putting up such a vigorous debate, our legal costs are, in fact, going up because we have to defend it. So unfortunately, you know, it is a cost that I don't like spending. I certainly don't like giving money to lawyers. But, you know, this is an important topic to me, and I know in a lot of people, about owning our water rights and being able to have the opportunity to purchase this water company, and we've come so far, we can't stop now.
Well, I mean, think about it. You can't blame them. I mean, if you were, if you were morons, maybe $100 million doesn't mean anything in a valuation.
Yeah, no, I agree.
But to them, if they can get another 30 or 40 million, they don't have any loyalty to Milford's taxpayers.
Yeah, no, no question.
So if they got to spend an extra million or so to get, okay, maybe they don't get the 100, they get 40, 30. You can't blame them.
And if you think about it, it's about 2% to 3% of the, what will be the eventual purchase price, I'm sure. And if you think about it, that's kind of in line with what you pay when you're, when you're purchasing a home. So it's, it's, to me, that's money well spent to make sure that we get the best deal possible.
In the most important detail that I like to point out to everyone is, that they don't care how much money they are spending, because they're, they wrap it into the water rate later on, so it doesn't matter, they're not, they're never going to pay that.
There's no lose.
We pay, we pay for their, for these lawyers. So the point is, they don't care about how much money they're going to spend on their lawyers, because they are allowed to pass those legal fees on to the ratepayers. So basically, we are paying their lawyers as well.
And if it was only that, Chris?
Yeah.
But not only do they get to take whatever $100 they spend and add it to their expense line, but they get a reasonable profit.
Yeah, profit, yeah.
So there's incentive for them to spend more.
Yeah.
Because if they win, they get more money.
Yeah.
If they lose, they just add that, but they still get a 6% or 8% profit.
Even if they win, they get more money, and they'll raise the water rate, so...
Okay. Geriatric authority payments.
Yes, this was actually something that was passed in 2000, oh, no, yeah, 2007.
2007.
I thought I was going to say 2008, 2007. In which we would accept payment in lieu of taxes, and for some reason, it was never instituted. And this article basically is cleaning up something that was passed in 2007 that we never did with the geriatric authority.
I think we instituted it.
Yeah.
Because people don't know, I remember one time back then, somebody came and said, why are we hiring pilots for the geriatric authority? And they didn't understand that pilot meant payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah.
And, you know, basically, I mean, I had an experience where my mom was up there. It's all Milford people, not only working, but taking care of our grandmothers, our grandfathers, adding money on top of them by charging the geriatric authority rent for the property, just didn't make any sense.
But no, you're exactly right. We have actually been doing it since then. It just wasn't legally on the books, and that's why...
It wasn't filed correctly.
Yes, that's correct.
So this, my understanding is...
I spoke incorrectly, yeah.
No, no, you were right.
At the state house, it wasn't, it wasn't voted on, there's no governor's signature on it, so it's going to make it official.
Police chief vacancy.
Passover, right?
Yes, this was, they were looking to possibly look to add some funds for a temporary police chief, but by looking at, you know, just the fact that with the chief not being there, we would have his salary, as well as the compensated absences fund, there is plenty of money to be paying any chiefs.
And I think realistically, if something happened and became a dire that, hey, we need money, or we can't employ somebody?
Yeah.
I mean, we all know the finance committee does have $100,000 tucked away by the town meeting every year. We got to account for every penny. But if an emergency happened and we had to help them out, we could. So it makes sense here. Now, the next one, the police chief selection committee.
Sure. So, so we're looking for a new police chief, and, and there's a committee set up to do that, and they need money to operate. So there, there's going to be money for advertisements, for, you know, to put in the papers, and maybe, who knows what, other media, background checks, you know, physical exams, there's, there's a lot of things that, soft costs that go into finding a new candidate. And so basically, this is a fund that will be set up for the committee to spend. Back in 2001, that number was $25,000. So 18 years later, we're looking for about $50,000, just to...
Yeah, we're looking for double the money, but it's been almost 18 years, almost two decades ago. And you have to spend, I mean, there's no way you're not going to do background checks.
Absolutely.
There's no way you're not going to do the investigations to make sure that we're getting correct information. Cemetery collective bargaining.
We have a, we have a standing policy on the finance committee that when departments are doing their budgets, that they do their budgets according to what current pay is. You can't theorize that this might, there might be a 3% raise, a 2% raise with the union, that type of stuff. So with that being said, they plan their budget, and then contracts get done with the union after negotiations are done, and whatever those raises are, obviously, we need now to fund those raises. So, like I said, we never tip our hand by, because if we budgeted 4%...
Years ago, we used to say, well, let's budget at least 4%.
Yeah.
Now, I'm negotiating with you, right? You don't think they read the paper?
You're not starting any lower than 4%. That's the starting point now.
I know you got 4%. Why would I negotiate at 3?
Yeah, right. So what this does is, it just allows, after the negotiations done with the unions, to be able to backfill their department's budget in order to be able to pay those employees.
Now, one that the finance committee did not take a position on was moving the elections to November, Article 18.
Yeah, so this is, again, this is a citizen petition, this one submitted by Brian Cole. This would move our town elections from our April timeframe to a November timeframe, in line with all our state and federal elections. The mechanism here, this article seeks for special legislation. So if this passes town meeting, we file with our state representative to submit a bill to the general body to pass a law that says Milford town elections will happen in November.
Now, what do you think are the pros and cons of that?
Well, the main goal of this is to increase citizen participation in our elections. So, you know, you look at the elections in November, they're upwards of 50, 60%, you know, voter turnout. When you looked at the town election, I think we had about 12...
12.9.
12, yeah, 13%. And so it's really low. There's a big discrepancy. So the, the thought here is, you know, why don't we combine those two events into one big event, everyone shows up, you know, you get your 60% and 60% votes in the town election versus only the 13%.
Well, I mean, I could see, Brian brought up some good points, and the thing that swung me was, what we're doing is not working. We're at 12.9%. It was embarrassing.
Yeah.
Somebody stands up and says, I have a better idea. Well, why not try it?
Well, I don't think that's, see, in the, in the position I, and we didn't vote on this, and I don't, I don't disagree with you, why not try it? That's fine, but I think it needed to be looked into more. There are certain details that, like, cost. Tell me, is it going to cost less, is it going to cost more? It doesn't necessarily mean it's going to cost less just because we're doing one election instead of two. Because one of the details that I picked up on, that really caught my ear, was that the fact that we're going to actually have to have twice as many precincts...
We're going to have two stations.
Twice as many voting stations, exactly, for each precinct. So now, for our eight precincts, we're actually going to have 16 voting places, because you need to have a state ballot.
We had 16.
Exactly.
We're going to have, we're not paying rent for the Portuguese club.
Yeah.
They allow us, we're not paying rent for the senior center.
Yeah.
So I don't see this being cost-saving at all.
Yeah, and that's why, and I, like I said, I don't necessarily have a position on it. I just want to hear more. Mr. Cole had, he hadn't talked to the selectmen yet, and, you know, and I also think maybe a little, in an ad hoc committee, possibly, or him do some more research, and it's certainly something that I would be happy to, to hear more details on, because certainly, the 13% turnout for, for town election, to me, and it was a beautiful day, to be honest, compared to most of the election days, it was, that's pitiful.
But see, to me, I like the position the FinCom took, which is, this should go in front of the voters, and it should be well discussed, well thought out, because some of the negatives that nobody talked about was, okay, it's hard enough getting attention for the selectmen's race, the school committee race, you bury that under...
The presidential.
The presidential, or, these guys may not get any bandwidth.
Yeah.
So I really like the idea that we said, we really don't have enough information to have an informed opinion. So it's kind of like, olé, let it go by, and when Brian has a chance to really work it through, then we can talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
When we start looking at the next one, I always get a kick out of liquor license.
Yeah, this is as our standard thing that we do, is we refer to sponsor on these. If they don't have a financial impact, and we, you know, it's really nothing that's in our, our expertise here, you leave it to the, to the sponsor, and in this case, it's the selectmen.
Abandoned motor vehicles, the police chief amendment, I mean, article.
Yeah, so I actually missed this meeting, this was a refer to sponsor. Chris, could you give some background info?
Yeah, basically, it's, it's, on this, it was... Yeah, basically, it's, it's, on this, it was, it gave the.
Something about abandoned motor vehicles.
Yeah, it gave the, the chief the ability to remove older abandoned vehicles. And then there was another word, that's what I'm looking for.
Basically, it gives the police chief some oomph as to dealing with abandoned vehicles.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I can't find the other word, but there was another word besides abandoned, but, yeah. So, and that's really all it is. Once again, not a money article, something that, you know, really doesn't fall to us, we refer to sponsor on that as well.
You got some dead cars left in an open lot.
Yeah.
You gotta have.
Gives them the ability to remove it.
Yeah.
Gives them the ability to take action. I mean, and that's all we're asking. Ah, a zoning bylaw comes in to the, by the planning committee.
Yeah, so this is yet another sign by law.
It's gonna be five town meetings in a row you've addressed signs, possibly.
It seems that way. It definitely seems that way.
Signs are today's chickens.
Yeah. We weren't getting through this one.
Okay, so it looks like this one deals specifically with projecting signs. I'm not gonna go into the details, but it, it is mostly, from what I can tell here, commercial signage. And this was a.
Well, I mean, it is something, if you remember when the ophthalmic surgeon sign went up on the end of, I guess it's the middle of West Street.
Yeah, West Street, yeah.
I think it was the end.
West Street, Highland Street.
Westland. Boy, that was bright. You know, and you sit there and say, if you put that too close to a neighborhood, you know, I mean, you wanna go and watch TV at night, you really don't want, you know, those bright lights hitting you. So you do have to have some control.
Sure, absolutely.
I remember when, what was the one up off of Purchase Street that bordered EMC? When they put in the new parking lot? We had old Milford families up there and all of a sudden, at night, every room in their house lit up.
Really?
Well, yeah, because they were bordering the woods.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think, is it violet or?
It's challenging when it, when it's lit up signs, right? That, that, that's a lot more disruptive than, say, a, a non, you know, a basic sign.
Well, I mean, you gotta deal with signs, 'cause I remember getting the, the notice that I would be prosecuted to the end of the world if I didn't take down my sign that said, "I support Milford Police."
I still say that silly.
I just sat there, shook my head and said, "Okay, I'm just curious. What policeman's gonna come to my house and arrest me for having a sign that say, 'I'm really proud of the Milford Police.'"
Good luck.
But we found out you couldn't have a temporary sign, so you had to put a border around it, make it a permanent sign. Okay, that's Milford, you know?
And it's those kinda details that makes the sign things come back every single meeting.
Every single meeting. Someday, we'll bring back chickens and bunnies and others. Article twenty-two, collective bargaining with police.
Same as Article seventeen with the cemetery. We are backfilling their budget, the negotiations are over. There's some retro pay that needs to be done for the years because there was even, the, the contract had expired so much that we needed to be some retro. So I think it was a hundred and seventy, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in retroactive money we had to pay. So we were favorable on that as well.
And I mean, there's a budget that every year, Tom, Chief Tom comes in. I think he's had some years where he's left thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents out of a few million that he gets. But, I mean, the police watch their budget. I mean, I got a kick out of when I was on the subcommittee, finding out he was looking at it every day. You know, when it came down to June, he was checking every single day to make sure that he didn't go over by anything.
Right.
So, you know, when you got, I think his is the highest personnel percentage in town.
Yes, yeah.
Cause he's up like ninety-four percent of his budget are people.
It's all officers, yeah.
Now, I mean, last year, I mean, you know, we've got a couple minutes, we can talk. If you think about what's happened in our public safety departments, we added four people to the police last year, the SWAT team, to take care of our kids. And this year, we added four people to fire. I mean, that's a pretty substantial investment when you look at other towns. And we were one of them that hadn't added anybody for fifteen years.
Yeah, and I, I think that's an important detail is, you know, we always are investing in, in our community. And obviously, fire and, and police, they're on the front lines. And, you know, when you make an investment like that, it makes your community a better place, okay? The other thing is, if you look at, as you had talked about, how long it's been since those numbers had, had, had increased. Like, for example, this year, as you had mentioned, we're, we're looking to add fire, four firefighters to the force. And the last time I think that they had added anyone to the force, I think was, yeah, it was eighteen years ago, something like that. And so just as a reference, you know, why do you need more firefighters? So Chief Tui comes out and he goes, "Well, number of calls in," whatever it was, two thousand and, two thousand, I think it was, two thousand and one. He goes, "We had fifteen hundred and thirty-six calls." We're like, wow, that's a lot of calls. Two thousand and eighteen, five thousand, eight hundred with the same staffing. So basically, it was almost a four and a half time, or maybe a four-time increase in the number of calls without it increased any in staffing. Which, you know, that's a real testament to the management of the fire department between him and his brother over the years of getting, you know, more from, from your employees.
When you look at the productivity, the dedication, TUI Rev. One and TUI Rev. Two, they've both done incredible jobs. And you start looking at what the firefighters do. I mean, it's not just putting out fires, 'cause everybody says, "We have a fire every month," or, you know, "Why do we need all these people?" Well, everybody forgets that they're the first line for medical. And I remember when we had our block party up in Whitewood, kid jumped off the wall, did a face plant. Within minutes, Teddy DiPaolo.
Yeah, rescue ones up there.
Scotty Marshall. And, you know, I'm not saying they're better than ambulance people. I mean, I wouldn't have a way of.
But they're first on the scene.
They're first on the scene. And, you know, there's something about when I looked up and saw Scotty and Teddy, I feel a lot better. I know I shouldn't, but they're Milford boys, or Milford men, I can't call them boys. But, you know, they're our family. And somehow, it feels, I hate to say better, 'cause I don't have any analytical reason to say it does. But when you got guys that you've been on the soccer field with for twenty years, who know your kids, boy, I want them to be the first ones.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know the type of jobs that they do, you know, it's, it's not a safe job. We run away and they run in, you know? And that's what I said, and for them to have more help, more staffing, so that it could maybe hopefully one day prevent an accident that might have happened that more staffing now prevents, whether it's a fire or whatever. You know, that's an investment in, in, and it's important that we do that. And another thing, actually, in their budget that they're doing is they're doing testing on, we didn't talk about this, and we do have a couple minutes, so. I really would like to highlight this, 'cause there was another great thing that the chief did. It's for twenty-five thousand dollars, they're having every member of the police, the Fire Force tested for cancer and many other ailments.
Now, why would you do that?
Well, unfortunately, if you look at our department now, we have had cancer running rampant in there.
And it's not just our department.
No, and I, and I apologize.
Firefighters in general. You know, 'cause when you think about them running into burning buildings to save kids, yes, but it's not. The real, the bigger danger is that their cancer rate is three to four X.
Yeah.
'Cause look, they're breathing bad things.
Right. You think about all, all the old buildings they've run into with, you know, asbestos or whatever chemicals are burning, it gets into the air and the smoke, they inhale that and, or even just.
But their clothes.
On their clothes. And, and so they may not be, the, inhaling it at that moment, but if they don't wash their clothes off right away and immediately remove their uniforms, they're gonna inhale that later on.
And see, that was another thing, I mean, was that last year, we funded double.
Second set of uniforms.
Second set of uniforms, people said, "Well, why can't they wash them?" Well, okay.
While they're in the water.
Yeah.
On Monday, we had an incident. I send my clothes to home or wherever I'm gonna, you can't send it home, 'cause it's full of asbestos. But wherever, we're gonna have it cleaned. Fire happens Tuesday morning. "Oh, I'm sorry, Chris, I'd love to come, but my clothes are out there." No, what these guys did is put on the old or the dirty stuff. And now, all of a sudden, you're sitting there saying, "Well, wait a minute." You're breathing all the crapski doodle that came in from the last one.
Yeah.
And you wonder why the cancer rate is so much higher. You know, we've had a couple where the clothing for the firefighters and then the SWAT team. I mean, we've had a lot of people ask, "Why do we need a SWAT team? Isn't there a Massachusetts or a regional SWAT team? Why are we hiring four new officers?" And I remember looking, the two of us looked at each other and said, "If something happens and we don't vote for this, how would we ever look?"
Absolutely.
"At a Milford mother or father and say, 'There could have been a chance that we could have stopped it.'"
Right. And this is one of those things that I, and I remember I said it, and I know a bunch of us said it, "I hope we wasted this money."
Yes.
I really do, and you'll never hear that from me or any of us on the finance committee.
I hope I never cash in a life insurance policy.
So the investment in the special operations unit is one of those things that, I mean, they do do other things and they are still on the streets and that stuff, but obviously, they're trained for that. But I hope they never put that armor on. I hope they never use those special skills that they have, 'cause if it does, it means that something tragic is happening in our town.
I mean, I hope TUI Rev. Two never comes to my house with a fire truck.
Yep, right, exactly.
But the day I need it.
You want it there.
I want it there. And I really wanna see familiar faces to make my agita go down.
There's no question. And then, you know, it's not like we're being paranoid here because if you had watched the news at the, in the, the beginning of two thousand and eighteen, which is one of the times that we decided this, I think out of the first ninety days in two thousand and eighteen, there's something like fifty school shootings. I mean, it was like, it was almost happening, whereas one every two days, it was like an astronomical.
The thing that flipped me is when they said, "We have great response time by the regional SWAT team." From when we pull the lever and say, "We need help," they're in Milford, ready to rock within forty minutes.
Right, yeah.
And then they said, "But the average incident is over in eighteen."
Yeah, right.
So I'm like, okay, it's great that they showed up, ready to go, but they're there to clean up?
Yeah, right.
You know, and.
And, and really, when you think about it, you know, SWAT is not, not designed to deal with today's active shooter. It, it's really designed to be more of like a hostage situation where you have, you know, yes, they have to respond quickly, but, you know, they're talking, you know, tens of minutes versus, you know, single-digit minutes. Milford can, yeah, Milford police officers can be at the school within minutes, not forty-five.
Well, the other thing too that I really liked is they're patrolling the school. So they nuke every nook, they know every nook and cranny.
Yep.
So, you know, when you say, "There's somebody down the C Wing," they know to go to the science lab. It's not pulling out a map, trying to figure it out, because again, if somebody's sitting there emptying a clip, it's not tens of minutes, it's seconds.
Well, you'll see on Facebook pages, whenever there's like a, a school break, the, the schools will fill up with police officer vehicles at the schools. And people are like, "Oh, what's going on with the schools?" And, and what they're doing is they're, they're using the opportunity with the school being empty to walk the, the school buildings, the classrooms.
Training exercises.
Exactly, getting, you know, familiar so that, God forbid, they ever have to be prepared. They know every nook and cranny of that, that building.
And you notice that, I mean, if we're in our parades, whether it's the Santa Parade, Fourth of July Parade, all that kinda stuff, you'll notice that the special ops unit is out there as well. Anytime there's large gatherings of our residents, you know, it's, it's a presence to, to.
Well, you're seeing it now with synagogue, I mean.
Oh, yeah?
They're going after churches and it's not a specific demographic. You know, when you sit there and say, "It's only this religious sect." It isn't, 'cause, you know, you think back to Oklahoma City, Timothy McVeigh, well, he was a Christian. You know, so you've got Muslims, Christians, I mean, every denomination has its own kooks.
Yeah.
And we just have to be ready for all.
Yeah.
Now, being ready, snow and ice, this year was a good snow and ice year.
Good-ish, good-ish. Every year, we, we set a, a snow and ice budget, knowing that the probability of it being sufficient enough to cover all snow.
Is zero.
Is very, very small. The reason being is, once you, once you increase that number, you can never bring that number down in a budget. So, you know, for instance, if you have a really heavy year, you don't wanna set next year's to that heavy year fault, you know, amount because you'll never be able to bring that back down. So knowing.
By state law.
By state law. Knowing that we can't do that, we set it lower than what we traditionally expect, knowing that we'll, we'll cover the snow and ice deficit in the next town meeting. So this is, this is basically it. So we, we overspent by two hundred and five thousand dollars, and now we gotta pay for that.
See, and it's amazing, because Scotty came in and he's totally jaundiced my view of snow. When he came in and said, "He's got the snow removal down to ten, eleven thousand dollars per inch."
Right.
So all of a sudden, when you hear, "There's gonna be six inches of snow."
Yeah.
Oh, sixty grand.
It's like the register.
And that deficit, honestly, you think about that, it was nineteen inches that last snowstorm, eleven.
That's the whole budget.
Eleven thousand, that's, that's our deficit.
That's the whole budget. No, but you think about it, we put it at two fifty, because that's the only budget we can overspend.
That's correct.
You know, by law, I don't think people, a lot of people understand that as the department head, you are liable if you overspend your budget. And when we get to the next article, you'll see what happens. But you can't just overspend and say, eh, too bad. You could be in a lot of trouble if you overspend, except for snow and ice.
Yeah. And one of the things that we do with snow and ice, and I'm very proud of, is the fact that we pay for this out of free cash. So we're not taxing anymore for pay for the snow and ice. We take that from their leftover money, I would call free cash, is a good way to equate it to the normal people that we haven't used in the past. We use that money to pay off the snow and ice deficit.
Now, when we get to Article twenty-four, I mean, that's where you say, "A billion here, a billion there." Pretty soon, you're talking real money.
Right.
When we allocate money for all the articles, a few years ago, we stopped the practice, a few, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, of saying, "We gave the school a hundred dollars to build a playground." Playground only cost eighty, so now they can take the twenty and go use it somewhere else.
Right.
And we've been pretty strict on saying, "If you need money for something else, you go back to town meeting and plead your case. You can't just take leftover money." And, you know, when I start looking, I mean, I got a big kick out of the new riding mower with the Parks Department. There's forty dollars left over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were right on the money as, as far as their estimate of how much that mower was gonna cost, to the point where they only had forty dollars left in that account.
Well, look at the, the computer replacement. Five articles put together, thirty-nine dollars left over. But it takes town meeting to give it, and it takes town meeting to take it back.
Right. So basically, this is, this is all, like you said, all the money left over for these very specific projects. You know, we have here Memorial Playground, you know, there's thirteen thousand dollars in that account. They estimated a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. It ended up coming a hundred and seventy and change. The balance then, it, it remains in this account until town meeting authorizes it.
To come back.
To come back, to close the account and.
But again, when I add up all these little, you know, you just once said, "I want my change."
Yep.
Well, these aren't little changes. You know, 'cause this year alone, we're gonna pull back over, what is it, two hundred and thirteen thousand?
Two hundred and thirteen, yeah, yeah.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is. And, you know, we have always, and people will say, "Well, why don't you just put that money for that playground in their budget or that mower in their budget?" This is the exact reason why we don't put it in their budget. Because if we give them their money in their budget, they can, they can spend it. And when we put it in an article, that's all they can spend it for. If the article is for a lawn mower, they can't then buy a truck or whatever. The point is, it, whatever the article specifies that that money is to be spent on, is all they can spend it on. So even though they would have loved to spend that extra thirty bucks on gas, whatever, they can't spend it on that.
Right.
And that's why we have the policy, if anytime you purchase something like this, doesn't go in their budget, you'll have an article for it, the money's locked in there on the article until we do something like this and bring the money back.
When I first got on the committee, we found, sometimes we lost track of things.
Yeah.
If you put the hundred dollars to buy a printer in their budget, the one-time printer.
It stays in the budget year after year.
Now, next year, it's a hundred and two.
Oh, you're right.
Right, and then a hundred and four, and you just keep adding it until you say, "Whatever happened, well, we can't take it out now."
Yeah, yeah.
So, the last article is the intra-department transfer. So, the last article is the intra-department transfers. Now, that really tells you that, "Hey, Mr. Department Head, you're on the hook. Your budget's a hundred bucks. If you're going over in bits, you know, you're buying supplies. You best be taking money out of your salary account." But the good news is, you can't do it on your own.
Right.
You know, I mean, a lot of times, people have said, "Well, I can just take the money that was budgeted for maintenance and put it into hiring a part-timer." Not without town meeting approval.
No. A great, a great example of this is, is the fire department. They were under budget in their personnel line, thirty thousand dollars. And they had a situation where an unexpected expense came up with some of their, with one of their fire trucks. They needed a significant repair done. And so what we're doing is, well, you're, you're over in one account, you're under another, let's, let's transfer that money over so that it can be properly spent.
Yeah, but Mike, more importantly, we went and you say, "Excuse me, Chief Tuohy Rev Two, you're gonna have thirty thousand dollars more in expense? You best be finding a way to be a little more efficient in your overtime and everything else, 'cause you know you gotta come up with that money somewhere." And unless, I mean, in the past, if you remember the highway department, they had a major heater go out and some other stuff, we had to help them with one of them, and they had to squeeze the others. But, I mean, this really does, I mean, I love the one that says Personnel Services, General Government, two hundred and forty dollars that Rick was going over. Okay, you best be saving two hundred and forty somewhere. So it's not trivial. I mean, this is serious stuff, that you are on the hook.
It is, and I, you know, just 'cause for any people who, who don't know, this is true for every single department in the town, with the exception of the school department. The school department has the ability to move money between lines, okay? So they have a little bit more flexibility of, of where they're gonna spend their money. So it, it makes it a little harder to track stuff with them. But within every other department in this town, they're, they're stuck with this.
But on the other hand, they're also stuck that they get a budget.
Yeah.
They can't overspend their budget.
Yep.
You know, whichever way they wanna play, they still have sixty-odd million dollars, and that's all they're gonna get.
Right. 'Cause we are not gonna see a transfer from stabilization.
Right.
That ain't happening, okay? So, like you say, if they are gonna do it, they better make it up in, you know, equipment, personnel services, repairs, whatever.
Think about what, long about this time, the Milford Daily News just published the school district nearby Milford, who's going through two-million-dollar cuts and all this stuff.
Yeah, delaying people off.
You know, I mean, thank God, we're still having the argument about how much we're increasing.
Right.
You know, I mean, this year, and it's funny, 'cause everybody comes back and says, "Well, nobody ever debates at town meeting floor." It's just automatically, it's like, "You haven't been around for the first five months." You know, anybody who watched the last FinCom meeting saw how heated. Now, when you think about a hundred thousand dollars out of a hundred and seven million, right? It's point one percent. We had a knock-down, drag-out battle for point one percent. But that's the way it should be, whether you win or lose.
You know, it's, it's a small element of a, a big budget, but it, it's that philosophy that we, we take for every single line item, right? That we, we need justification for every single line item, without exception. And that's the reason why we're in the good fiscal position that we're in, and we're not, you know, like our surrounding communities, struggling to, to fund positions that we previously had, you know, years prior, that we're in fact continuing our investment in, in adding more services and adding more personnel, because we are a growing community. You know, Chris mentioned that we went up three and a half to four percent this year. Well, part of that is because we're growing. We need more firefighters, because our population is growing, you know? So, and that, I think that speaks volumes for the town and the direction we're going.
Well, I mean, there's something to be said, the last floor fight over a line item was what? Twelve, fifteen years ago, about the librarian's salary? You know, 'cause she took away the nickels of one department and they wanted to punish her. It was like hilarious, 'cause back then, it was eighty million dollars, we were debating thirty-two hundred dollars. I don't even know what the percentage, it's statistically negligible.
Yeah. And that's one of the big misconceptions that I always try, and I continue to say it over and over again, is that we don't decide a hundred and seven million dollars on May twentieth. We decide it over a course of a year. And through debates with the finance committee, selectmen, the finance director, town accountant, it doesn't matter. We all work as a team to do this throughout the year. I mean, I joked with, I was meeting with Reno Duluzio today, and we were talking about town meeting. And he says, "Well, when does your financial planning, how soon can you get me stuff?" I said, "Reno, on May twenty-first, I start thinking about-"
Next.
"Next year." We get done on the twentieth for this year. On May twenty-first, I start thinking about planning for the next fiscal year. I said, "So that's how we plan through time, so that we can come to a consensus. We can work out all the details, so that we can have our budget flow. And that, when you do see us vote at town meeting and no one gets up to talk about it, the reason why is 'cause they may have gotten up five times with us over the course of the year and said, 'this, this, this, and this.'"
Well, I love that, when people said, "Well, you and the school department always get along." And it's like, "Come on down."
Come to a subcommittee budget hearing.
But that's, that's what people don't understand. The real, and this is horrible to say, nothing against you, Mr. Chairman, but the real work is at the subcommittee level.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because there's where every dollar's being bashed, and then by the time it hits the whole FinCom.
You've had the subcommittee to, to kinda hash out the details.
I mean, how many meetings have you had on the school subcommittee?
Oh, probably over a dozen.
And it came down to sixty-million-dollar budget all in, and the difference was a hundred and thirty thousand?
Yep.
I mean, not that a hundred and thirty thousand isn't important, but boy, I love the idea that we're not debating anything but point one percent of a budget.
Right.
And it was passion on that point one percent.
It really was.
You know, so, you know, again, I encourage people, if you really wanna learn what's happening, watch the FinCom meetings, get the notes from the budget subcommittee meetings, 'cause that's where the real debate and discussion goes. A few years ago, we decided that every article would be listed, 'cause people came to us, Chris and I, and said, "You guys get information on the FinCom that we don't get as town meeting members to the last minute, and it doesn't seem fair that we should try and vote on it." It seemed reasonable. That's where the town meeting report came out, from the FinCom. And now, we put on, remember the big fire truck? People came and said, "You put a hundred and sixty pages of background. You expect me to read that?" I said, "No, but it's a million dollars." You bet I'm gonna put all the information that Tuohy Rev One gave us, you know? 'Cause it's your money. You have the right to know.
How many couples are on that fire truck?
For a million bucks, it better be a lot. Any last words for our six loyal viewers?
No, I just, for people, read the report. I mean, you're the one that, to be honest with you, authors this report that we talked about today. Please, read our, our report before town meeting. It gives a lot of the justification of, of why we do what we do. Also, go on to the website, please, look. It's not as much on this meeting, because most of our stuff is, capital is the next meeting. But please, look at the information we provided to you. Please, take it and use it.
And you should know that for the spring meeting, since we don't know what our excess revenue, you know, surplus will be, capital items are only special occasions or special items and emergencies. So if you're looking for, "Why do we always buy our trucks and everything come October?" 'Cause back then, we know how much money we have. So, thank you for joining.
Thanks for having us, huh?
And to our six loyal viewers, get involved, learn, this is your money. We spend, you know, I buy coffee, it's my money. I get to spend my two dollars on my coffee, 'cause it's mine. But we take it very, very serious that before we spend your two dollars, we're gonna have these long debates. And like I say, if you had watched the last FinCom meeting, you'd see how emotional point one, the last point one percent got. So as always, good night, thanks for joining us, may God bless, and may tomorrow be a better night than tonight.